Join meeting this says.
Click right there. Is that in your click? It's not highlighted. It says sign in. Launch meeting right there.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start the city council meeting agenda for Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-one. We'll strike this at seven eleven. Stand for the pleasure. Have a silent moment of silence, please. This time I'd like us to remember all of our friends and that's been affected by the coronavirus. We have a lot of really good friends that's no longer with us today because of it and family members, so. Thank you.
Council member Castaneda. Here. Council member Sotelo.
Yeah.
Council member Zavala. Council member De La Fuente.
Yeah.
Council member Gornau has called in, said he has a family emergency. We need a motion to excuse or non-excuse him.
I'll make a motion that we excuse Mark Bonner.
So we have a a motion by Vera, seconded by TD, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so we need to vote, vote in on the meeting agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Sophie and seconded by TD, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Visitors comments, do we have any visitors online, Jameson?
We did not have any requests for visitor comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. We need to vote in the consent agenda, please.
I need the motion to approve the consent agenda A through D.
I have a motion by Sophie and seconded by Vera, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Okay, we'll go down to number seven. Bold Business. Approval of Resolution two zero two one dash zero three, putting back in place ordinance seven three zero relating to the graffiti removal. This is on page twelve through nineteen. This is what we discussed at our last council meeting about being able to go onto people's properties, private properties, and remove their graffiti if it's been tagged there.
I think we still had one. Didn't we have one made up before?
We did, TD, I mean, this, this ordinance is dated seven three zero, but we haven't really been doing anything with it, so we're just doing a new resolution for this year.
Revising it.
Right. And so the new resolution will bring this back into code.
Do we get the owner's permission to enter the residence?
Correct.
Okay, they can do that first, okay.
I think actually in her somewhere.
I see there is a paper nineteen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we, we have them sign this and then anytime if they get graffiti this week, we go do it. And next week, we can still go do it. All in week, we don't have to get the permission every time we go under their property as long as we're going on to take care of graffiti. This will be an ongoing contract between the city and whatever entity we're.
So if the resident signs this one time, it's good forever?
I don't, I don't know if it's good, is it good forever? Jameson? Do you know if it's good forever, or is there a timeframe on this? Or is it just for the year?
Sylvia might be better to answer that question because she actually prepared the forms. I'm not sure if we put an end date on them. I, I don't know.
Add something to it.
Yeah.
Where they give provision for, whenever it's done.
So do you think that like when we do an end date, like a two-year timeframe, or every year you want them to redo this, or?
I don't know.
Yeah, because they might change owners by then, or something that way.
Sylvia?
She was and she left.
If that's what they would like to do, we could even update the form just to say something like for as long as the, until, until or unless the current owner rescinds it, or until or unless the, the proper ship changes ownership, or for a period of however many years. So if you guys give us direction, we can definitely adjust that. And you don't have to wait to pass this until we do that.
So do you guys want to put like, as long, this will be good through the owner of this house? Or this will be good through two years, or?
No, I thought Jameson said until the owner says so, that they don't want you coming on anymore, or yearly.
Okay. So if we can, if we can get it approved, you know, tonight, then we can start enforcing it.
Yeah.
Even if it's not this, you know, when it's stated here, we can revise it as long as we have your permission to do that tonight. So you guys need to sort of tell it exactly, do you want it a year thing? Do you want it until we don't want you anymore? What are you thinking? I like that until we don't want you, use you anymore. Or a new owner.
Or a new owner.
Okay.
And the specific form is not necess, it's not attached or connected to this actual ordinance, so we can change the specific form or the resolution, sorry, not ordinance. So the, the specifics of the form can be changed without any hindrance to passing this.
As the resolution itself is the actual law. And then what we, how we handle it with the individual person is what will change. That, um, get to that.
Yeah, and how is the paint going to be paid for?
Well, what we're gonna do is either get paint donated to us. We have quite a bit of old paint, different colors and stuff. So what we are telling the people as we do it, we're not gonna match their building.
No.
Whatever paint we have is the paint we're using to cover up the graffiti. That's all we care about is the actual graffiti. If they provide it, then that's a whole different thing.
I used to go to the recycling center in East Valley, and they would give us a bunch of four or five buckets for that, and also
Where's it at?
Recycling center on East Valley. And then we got a hold of oh, what was that, was it Lowes, the one that was right there at, by the mall in Yakima? Now it's Dick's Sporting Goods. Lowes used to give us a
Lowes is over there by Costco.
Okay. Get ahold of them, if they have any, that like they have, well, like, I don't know, I don't know. If paint outdates itself, I don't know, but. Yeah, and that's where I used to go get it, get ahold of Lowes.
That's always how we do is just get it where we can get it for, you know, free. We don't want it to cost us anything, because it's already costing us money, having our guys go out and do it.
Yeah.
You know, so that's already costing us, but both of those places and cities. Especially the recycling center, because they used to do it where they just do all the paints in one big thing and then mix it, make one big color.
Whatever they, whatever color they comes out, that's what you got.
Right, and you can get it in like five gallon buckets.
Five gallon, I always got them five gallon buckets.
Okay. So do you guys have any other questions on this? Do you feel okay enough to vote it in?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so let's go ahead and I need a motion for this, please.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero three.
I second the motion.
We have a motion by Sophie, seconded by Diana, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. New business. New business, approval of ordinance two zero two one dash eleven sixty-eight. Reaffirming the city official newspaper. Sunny Side Daily Sun News, and that's on page twenty and twenty-one. Again, this is what we discussed during county study session. The newspaper cost did not move, it's the same as it was last year. And it's the same contract as last year.
Okay, I make the motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven sixty-eight.
We have a motion by Sophie, seconded by opposed, motion approved. All right. Now we're down to staff, staff reports. Sylvia, do you have anything for us tonight?
I thank you.
Okay, Jameson?
I do not have anything, thank you.
How about you, Chief?
Yeah, I actually want to talk a little bit about some of the code enforcement that we've been doing. We've been focusing over the past week on getting people to not park on the sidewalks, and that started with a parent coming in and telling us, hey, the kids are gonna be back in school here really soon. And people are not used to seeing pedestrians out because the kids haven't been in school. So there's a lot of places where they can't walk on the sidewalks because people are parked on the sidewalks. So we started really trying to get people to move off the sidewalks. I know there's been a lot of attention, some of it negative. I can tell you that we're not, you know, we're not trying to, you know, we're, we're not excited about using enforcement. We would prefer that people just comply with us and get off the sidewalks. I think if you go down some of the streets, you can really see a big improvement on some of them where just a week ago or two weeks ago, those, those sidewalks were completely impassable. And now a lot of the streets, they're clear. You know, when I started here, I took, I kind of took a survey of what was the most pressing code enforcement actions that we needed to take. And there's a lot of them, and I've had a lot of people in my ear that have told me, we want you to focus on this, or, or whatever it might be. But I started with the, with the alleyways. I noticed a lot of our alleyways were blocked with vehicles and with debris. So we really focused on that, and now if you look at the alleyways, they're almost completely clear of vehicles and debris. And the reason we focused on that was because we were afraid if there was a fire, we couldn't get a fire truck through. Or if someone needed an ambulance, the ambulance couldn't get close enough to them because they couldn't get through the alleyways. So that, that was our focus, and if you look at all of our code enforcement, it's always come from a perspective of we're trying to improve the safety and the well-being of the community. And the enforcement that we've done over the last week has really been focused on that. We don't want kids who are going to school to all of a sudden dart out from in, from behind a vehicle in front of a driver who's not expecting them or who can't see them. And the kid darting out there because they have to go around a vehicle that's parked on the sidewalk. The sidewalks were not intended for people to park on. And I've had some people wanted to bait me about that, and I welcome that debate. We've spent, in this city, if you go back over time, the city has spent millions of dollars on those sidewalks. They're not cheap. And the legislative bodies that voted them in to, to spend money on building them, they never intended for people to park on them. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request to ask people to not park on the sidewalks. We've, I would say the vast majority of people that we've talked with about it have been cooperative and have moved on their own. But we have had pushback from a vocal, very small percentage of people have been very vocal about it. You know, ironically, this, the people who are complaining about this are some of the ones we're already dealing with about other code violations. So that's what we're doing, that's why we're doing it. We're not doing it because we take pleasure, you know, in enforcing laws. We, we take pleasure in trying to build a community and trying to make it a safe environment for people to raise their families. And where somebody's actions conflict with that, then they're gonna have a conflict with us. So that's where we're at right now. We're, we're really happy with the response that we've got from the vast majority of people. And we're not gonna stop and we're not gonna be deterred. We're gonna continue going, and we're gonna continue making sure it's as safe as possible to live here and raise your families here.
Thank you, Chief. I, you know, I drove yesterday through every street. I try and drive every single street of our town at least once a week. And we was doing a huge thing, code enforcing on broken down cars. Cars didn't have tags, cars that hadn't had tags for a minute, or, you know, you could tell they were broken down. We got a little bit of pushback from it, but I'll tell you, there's a couple of houses, there was one house, well, a couple, but one in particular. It had nine cars parked in front of it, all parked, you know, straight in illegally. Three cars ran, three cars had tags, one car didn't have tags since like two thousand sixteen. And I went out with the chief when he went to go talk to the young lady, first car we towed from her. And I drove by there yesterday, there's three cars parked in front of that house. It looks so clean, because you turn that corner and it was one of the first houses. So it's the first thing you saw, you know, all of them broken down cars, some no windows. You know, it's pretty bad. And you turn the corner and it's like, wow, what a difference. And I know that he's towed a lot, a lot of cars. And, and I've had a lot, a lot of phone calls from it, people complaining, but this is what the majority of our citizens wants to happen. They don't want to see broken down cars. They don't want to see somebody with ten dogs. They don't want to see, and not taking care of them, you know, even one dog that they don't take care of. They don't want to see that anymore. And although on some pages, you'll get two or three people really complaining about it, but we've got fifty people saying, thank you, pat us on the back. So, you know, I just, your job is a hard job, Chief, and I, and, and I want to applaud you because you stepped up, in my opinion, and you did conquer a lot of codes, a lot of stuff that has, I've been taking care of them, so. And, and I definitely the difference, I see the difference down Fourth Avenue, I see the difference down Second Avenue. You know, I see the difference down streets, our troubled streets, and and so people are gonna complain, but as we go forward and we can put our ordinances the way we want them and, and the way that all the people, and that's the main thing, is people just don't understand that we've had a dog ordinance for umpteen years, it just hasn't been followed. And we've had parking ordinances and statutes for years, they just haven't been followed. But the new administration that's here today is following every rule and every guideline, and so does everybody else within our community, so. So I just want to, I'll let you know, the chief is, and his, those small staff there, I see a huge difference, you know, and the graffiti. If the person is listening to this, it's out there, please stop marking up our town. Mark up your own town, go to your own town and mark it up. We're trying very hard to make our community a good community to live in, a safe and nice community, and you guys are not helping us. So if you don't want to help, please just stay away, and please just don't come. And that's about that. Let's see, I don't, there was one other thing I wanted to tell you about. So the Governor's Park, we're really working hard on that park, made a lot of phone calls the last couple of weeks. Shook some hands a couple of weeks, and I got a really good phone call today this morning. I had a phone call from Kenny, she is Senator Honeyford's right hand, and I've been working a lot with him. And off our fingers, but the way she's talking, she's gonna, they're gonna help us, they're gonna help us get the money for the parking ride, and they're gonna help us get the money to finish up Governor's Park, put in the sprinkler systems. We have to get some information for them. Jameson received it this morning, I sent it to her, Kenny sent it to me, so hopefully everybody, please just keep your fingers crossed and pray that we get the funding that they can give us. Our parking ride, we need about forty-eight or nine thousand dollars left, that was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And it's completely funded except for what I'm asking Senator to help us with, and and they seemed very, very positive in that, so I'll let you know as, as things go along, but we should know they're gonna just sign it out of their direct funds. So that's what Kenny was telling me yesterday, so there's some things that we need to get together. And Jameson and Sylvia is already working hard on those to get that stuff together for her, and and so we'll see probably within the next month or so. And all the funding is through, if they award it to us, so everybody just keep your fingers crossed, it'd be nice to get Governor's Park completely finished and not out of our pocket. I think that that's, is there something else I need to talk about? I'm done, right? Do any of you as council, do any of you as council have anything that you'd like to share and talk about this time?
How's the progress on the homeowners' clinical, TD, upcoming buildings down and stuff?
Yeah, so I guess at the time had been changed, and they're supposed to switch between the fifteenth and the end of March. But it's coming together. We thought it'd already be done, but there was some type of holdup somewhere. And so, Mr. Gunn, I just talked to him about it three or four days ago. Also, we had gotten some trees from them, I told you guys. And he actually called me yesterday, he had called me last week and said he had some more trees and that we could pay, you know, like I told you, we could pay him as we needed, as we could. He just gave them to us and, and let us pay him, when the city could pay him. But I, I was put under the understanding that that's not an okay thing for us to do, to just say, okay, we'll pay you whenever, because we gotta have, where that fund is coming from. Well, he called me this morning and said, you know what, I'm gonna give you those trees, if you have your staff, come get them. I'll just give them all to you, so they're not gonna cost us anything, and he's given us five more trees. So that's pretty cool. And that saves us a hundred dollars, because each of the trees before was a hundred bucks a piece, so, you know, it saves us the money. And he said, you know, I don't have nothing to do with them, and there's nowhere for me to use them, so please just come and get them so the city can use them, so. So, you know, thank Mr. Gunn, and when you see him. Oh, and yes, and I'd like to throw out there too, I, I want to give a special thanks to Vera, because Vera's really been helping me a lot as your mayor. She, you know, every time I call her, she is there for me, and, and she tries to help me, and, and she makes sure I don't have to do everything out in the, out in the street by myself, I, I have somebody to help me out, and, and I want you to know that, and the city to know that. Vera is actually the person that donated the five hundred dollars for the first trees for our city. That come out of Vera's money, so you guys out there, you see Vera walking around, you know, just tell her thank you for her extra support to our city, because she does already a lot for us. Okay, so I guess that I'm, okay. Oh, and Jamie, do you have anything that, Jamie, is there anything you'd like to talk about, attorney Jamie?
No, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, how's your wife, how, how you feeling?
We're doing okay.
Perfect. TD, did you have something?
Yeah, well, you know what I, what I always complain about? My lights. Did you find anything out Sylvia with PPNL and the electrician?
Hear me? I'm Gordon, the lead person was working on that. I said the lead person was working on that, TD, and he's been out sick.
And also maybe this directed to the chief and the mayor about, we're only down to one police officer now?
No.
No?
We have, we have two officers still, and we thought we had a third, but it didn't work out. We do have an add-in to, one of our cops did, did leave, but we do have
They've been asking me.
Yeah. But we do have some ads in. Sylvia, can you tell us where them ads are going into?
Indeed.
Indeed. That's where we got all the hits from the last time we tried Sunny Side, Yakima, Tri-Cities, but we got a lot of hits off that indeed. So hopefully, you know, we'll get that, that other position filled as quickly as possible. I know our, our chief is working a lot of overtime right now, trying to cover those shifts, so we're not out there alone. And, and also the Sheriff's Department knows, you know, when there's no one here, and they're, they're helping us out a little bit here and there too, so. But yeah, we, we are down one police officer, and so we are in the process of
We get a couple more.
Yeah, we try, we started the hiring process for one, but it just didn't work out, so, so now we're around, around zero for that police officer, but, you know, hopefully we'll be blessed with the right person that, that wants to come in. It's hard for Maptin because you can't just be a cop here, you know, you have to be a code enforcer. Most cops aren't, they have a code enforcer in their city, you know, so there's some cops that just doesn't willing to come and do that type of work there. And so it, it's a little bit hard for us, because that is part of their job. For instance, here is, you have to code enforce, you know, and, and our chief and our our chief and our cops are, are doing a really good job, and whoever we bring in has to be willing to do the same thing for us, so.
Well, no, so I, I was at the cemetery the other day, I didn't see very many police cars out there though. Those ones, are they being sold already, or?
Yeah, I can touch, touch base on that a little bit. We surplused, I can't remember how many vehicles we surplused, or the, this, the, the city council surplused a couple of months ago, so we started selling those. We started auctioning them off, and we've sold three of them so far. And one of them is sitting back here, is, is already been sold, and I haven't heard from the person who won the bidding yet. But it should be out of our parking lot within the next couple of days, as soon as it's gone. I'm gonna list another one right behind it, and, you know, my goal is to sell, to auction off all of those vehicles that the council surplused, and then I'll be coming back to you to talk to you about some of the other vehicles that we have at the sewage treatment plant and potentially surplusing those as well. So it's, it's, it's a benefit for us in a lot of ways. It, it gets it off of our insurance, so that we're not paying insurance on the vehicles just sitting there. And it creates a revenue stream coming in, and it's something that we don't have to worry about, someone's gonna go out there and steal or vandalize. So we want to get it down to just the vehicles that we're using, and maybe, maybe one surplus vehicle, but that's where they're going right now, they are, they are gradually, we're gradually working our way through them. This last one, I listed it, I put it up for bid for two weeks, and that was a little bit too long. So the next one, I'll put it for bid for ten days, so I can get the process going a little bit faster, but we have sold three of them.
What website are you putting those on?
Public Surplus, or Sur, if, so if you look at surplus.com, I believe is, is how the general
It is publicsurplus.com.
Okay, yeah, publicsurplus.com.
And I do want to give a shout out to the chief too, because he really has, you have taken this on, and we're all so busy, but we appreciate that you've But we appreciate that you've gotten those cars sold, so very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Urban growth, what about the cities?
Oh, you know, and I didn't, so Sophie had brought up that we, she thinks that we, that land there, Bannon's land, that, that we brought it into the urban growth, but we didn't bring it into the city. Do you, I thought that we annexed it into our city.
I wasn't here at the time, but I've seen documents saying that we annexed it into the city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She was very little confused about that, so I told her, I'll look into that. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was annexed straight into the city, because we wanted that, we want all that tax revenue. Anything else, guys? No, then we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:41. Have a great night, everybody.
Keep your mask on.
Yeah, take care.